Like. Do we have everybody?
I believe so.
Here. It's not yet. The only one on our side who listens, Pariel. So, uh, let's begin.
All right. So I'll take that as my cue. So thank you, Mr. Chair. So for this workshop, what we've wanted to do is invite the Community Engagement Commission together with City Council to have kind of a joint discussion. And as you all know, the ordinance establishing the commission was passed back in September of 2021. The commission started meeting, I think, in March of 2022 or so, somewhere around there. And so they've been doing things over that past year plus to obviously get their legs under them to kind of talk about goals and objectives, how they want to proceed with following kind of the duties that are outlined in the ordinance. And through that time, there's been a discussion about we really need to get some face time with council so that we can have a real discussion about what do these, what do these duties mean? How do you interpret what they are? What are some things that we should be focused on initially and long term that you believe would add value to the mission that's been established through the ordinance? And so that's really what tonight's discussion is all about. And you, I think, have both the ordinance two seventy seven, which establishes the commission, plus their goals and objectives that they passed. Seems like five, six months ago, somewhere in there. And you've had a chance to look at those. So really now the floor, I think we should open it up and just allow the chair of the commission to kind of open up and talk about how they've proceeded and what some of the clarification they may want to get from you all is. And then we can just go around and have a roundtable discussion. So Robin, do you want to kick it off?
Okay, thank you, Mark. So. Thank you for inviting us to having this workshop. One of the things that I was when we started this and I was thinking about how best to prepare for this is to really start back to the foundational document and that's the ordinance. And so when we really looked at this, when we formulated first the group, it seemed like the ordinance, it had had a lot of different responsibilities, a lot of things in there, even some terms that could have been, maybe the interpretation was different from what we had perceived. And one term was like it used co-production quite often. And we got together as a C E C and said, why don't we look at some of the goals that we think in mission statements that might be more appropriate? And how outreach really matters to us as well as doing technical data and serve the surveys that we do and the platforms that we looked at. We know that this year what we did purchase Zen City and that was done off of several workshops between us. But now it's time to really, I'm glad that we're having this with the city council to see what your thoughts are on the C E C. You've had, we've been engaged now, engaged, excuse me for the pun, no pun intended. For one year. What are some of your thoughts? And then we'll provide you some of our thoughts. Each person will have a couple of of take out or points that hopefully they can also share from their perspective. And so from my perspective, I think that it's important that we as the Community Engagement Commission really know what the city council really, it all goes back to the basics of the ordinance and what does engagement mean to each of you? And are we fulfilling that? Are we fulfilling therefore our goals and objectives in the ordinance? And should the ordinance maybe be modified between us also? These are all just questions that we thought about. And with that, I've talked enough and I will move over to Summer.
Uh, hey, I'm Sorndero. Thanks for meeting with us today. Um, my, my big point was I just wanted to meet. I feel like we're going to be, you know, whatever word we don't want to use, right? Liaison or advisors or whatever the thing is, right? Whatever we're avoiding. Uh, if we can come up with what it is that we actually are doing and, um, and be helpful and how can we help? And I think this will probably come up in the specifics of whatever we talk about, but what does a budget look like for us and, and why and what and what do you expect from us? And, um, I, I've noticed from our, our year of working together, we are not a group that's, uh, come up with some crazy ideas that are off the charts and, and unrealistic pipe dreams of, of money wants. I mean, we're talking about like, can we get mailers out to everybody? Uh, you know, I mean, that's, that's where we're at. Other things we're coming up with ways that we can do it um, ourselves. So I just want to make sure that we're having that conversation and that we can help you guys.
Uh, good evening. I'm Aaron Asmus. Um, I want to thank you guys for allowing us to join you today. You know, I think when, you know, when we look at the Community Engagement Commission and the potential that it has, you know, I think the pieces that come to my mind as we kind of look forward is trying to figure out how we can best integrate with the community, with the constituents themselves, gathering the things that are important to them, identifying what those are and vetting those pieces and being able to provide feedback up to city council and city leadership. Um, I think we have a lot of potential to be able to do that. I think it's just trying to understand what's our, um, uh, bandwidth of availability of doing that? And where's our guideposts from city council? Um, you know, how far can we, you know, push things from an envelope standpoint? Um, and where do we need to come back to city leadership and city council and understanding what those parameters are? Um, will help guide us as we make decisions moving forward as well. So those are just some of the things that I feel like are important for us to kind of help fine tune as we look at the, the commission itself. Um, because I think we could be more action oriented than what we've been over the last 12 months. I think we've talked about that as a commission itself. So anyway, those are just some of my thoughts as we kind of look forward for the conversation today.
Go for it, Mark.
Let's go, Mark. You should be on.
It's on. I'm Mark Saba, in case you guys don't know me, um, joke. I'd like to echo exactly what Summer and Aaron just said. Um, we do, you know, we, we've been in place now for a, for a full year. It's been a, I wouldn't say it's a challenge, but it's, it's been we haven't gotten the correct direction on where the council wants to see where we want to go. And that's why I'm glad we're having this workshop so we can find out exactly how they want to focus our energies in order to, uh, fulfill the, uh, abilities for us to engage with the community. And, um, by getting that direction, that'll give us something that we might, we, you know, I, I'm just thinking right off the top of my head, you know, maybe we should have had this meeting six months ago, but then again, I think about it, we got our first year under us, under our belt. We stumbled our way through it, but we were very energetic when we did it. And, you know, we were able to, you know, succeed by getting Zen City. We've, we just finished up our first survey, which honestly was pretty darn, you know, it was very in depth. And for the first one to come out very in depth, I think the outcome with the survey and what we put together was very successful. And so, um, that's about, you know, what I, all I'm really thinking about is, you know, like I said, you know, if we get some true direction from city council, I think that'll help us advance. Thanks.
I'm Bill Norman. The, I think the thing that I would add if, if we were just to stop now, it might be a, not an unreasonable conclusion that uh, we've been waiting for for more direction. And while direction is always good, I think we've been doing some good stuff. Part of that is because of the season that we're in. And the farmer's market offers an opportunity for us to be in front of fellow citizens routinely. And frankly, it's easily done because it's set up for us. So, uh, we've, um, learned some things. We had a couple of iPads there for some weeks with the, uh, intention of providing the ability of people to take a break from their morning or afternoon at the farmer's market and do the survey. People really didn't want, if they were going to take a break, they didn't want to use it taking a survey. So that didn't work very well, but then we printed these small, uh, handouts that had a Q R code on it. Invited participation in the survey. And we really think that that effort uh, has can very readily be, um, attributed, the, the increase in participation in the last couple of weeks can be attributed in part to that effort. So that seemed to be right down our alley. And, um, and it's something that we want to do more of. So a challenge we have is, uh, at other seasons of the year, how do we create opportunities for that kind of interaction? Um, we recently were at the, well, Barefoot in the Park. And while what we did there was useful and frankly fun and rewarding, we were, we had the booth there where the kids could paint rocks. And there are some really accomplished rock painters in Liberty Lake, I will tell you. We didn't really accomplish anything in terms of engaging the community in any kind of conversation. Which might be a sign to stop.
Hi, uh, my name is Cynthia Godinez and I'm the newest member and I still feel like I'm getting my feet underneath me, wondering, uh, what we do. I, I think the group is very talented and there's a lot of smart people on this, um, committee or, um, uh, commission. And I agree with Erin. I think that we have, um, a lot that we can offer. We can, we can study stuff. I see that in here, uh, that's something that we can do is study. I can study stuff and submit recommendations. If, if I know what we're looking for, what projects coming up. And then there's tons of ideas too, that I've just started brainstorming and would love to share. But I also don't know, like, what is our scope? Are these out of, like, are these left fielders or let's tone it down? And so I'm excited to see what we can do too. And I want to also agree. I think Barefoot in the Park was really fun and it was really fun to just be there. And even though that was minimal, I think being there with like the name tag on still meant more than just, you know, talking about the next thing, that the next survey or next, you know, not more, but I think it's still good to do that, to have your name tag on and be there when kids are rock painting and having more of those dots. And I agree though, I'm with you. We've got, we've got Barefoot in the Park, we've got Farmer's Market. We have Winter Glow that we want to be more part of this year. And what else? So that's the question is like, what else can we do? Okay, that's what I have to say.
So before we pivot, um, I'd just like to add that one of the, uh, kind of strategic elements of the timing of this discussion is that, uh, the commission meets tomorrow. Is that correct? And so they're going to have another opportunity to talk about what their budget proposal for 2024 is going to be. And so I think having some of those, and, you know, obviously this will be an ongoing uh, back and forth, but having some of that direction that the, that you've heard from the commissioners uh, will help them kind of craft that final request, whatever that's going to be, uh, that would include all of those proposed strategies for 2024 in particular, but then guidance going forward to, uh, add, you know, that ultimate value. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chair, take it away.
Uh, thank you. Excuse me. Um, well, I'll, I'll just start then, uh, with some, with a few thoughts. Uh, first of all, thank you for all your time and your hard work in the last year. Um, we've, we certainly do appreciate it. To answer your question directly, I guess when I voted to, uh, start this committee, I, I had two goals in mind. Uh, and the, and the first one was for the, uh, the C E C to suggest or find ways to get citizen feedback on city issues through whatever method or opportunity was out there. That's just not something I'm strong in. I'll tell you how to build a house, but telling you how to engage in citizens is just not my forte. So, uh, the more minds, the better in, in my opinion, when we establish this. So that was one of my goals. The second one was to obviously encourage citizen engagement. Now everybody has a different things that drive them, you know, whether it's, it's, uh, the farmer's market or it's, it's, uh, our police department or whatever it is, everybody has a different motivation for getting involved. So again, it was just the more minds at the table to engage, the better off we were going to be and the better service we were going to provide to the, to our, our city. So those are my two goals, um, as far as any feedback that way goes. Um, I, I guess I have, uh, in addition to that, I have a few questions, uh, based on your comments already. Uh, the first one is, um, uh, I know in our ordinance, we had, uh, I think it was five or six positions up to nine and I see six. So my question is, uh, are, are you, do you find that you more would be, if you had a full slate, would that be a better, a better working scenario or, or not? I'm not looking for an answer tonight. Um, but you asked for feedback, so I'm going to give you some, uh, or do we have too many? And I guess the other part of that equation is I know in our ordinance, we had tried to carve out different parts of the city of where these representatives, representatives would come from. So I'm curious if, if we've, if you've had any success with that approach. Um, again, I realize it's difficult to get people that want to participate, um, uh, and be on these committees and, and give, you know, be a part of it. So I'm just wondering if that really is critical to the ordinance. And then my last question for you would be, what suggestions would you have to make it for any ordinance changes? And, and one last comment and then I'll stop talking. I appreciate your comment about your, you've done this a year. Uh, the council's only been doing it for a year as well. So this is kind of a new thing for us to, so thank you.
And, uh, let me interject before you all weigh in on, uh, Mayor Portim's questions. Uh, Commission Member Jennifer Kosaka is not here. So we, we do have seven on the commission, uh, as of right now. So.
We do have another person who showed interest in joining our commission, but because of the demographics, it's already, the area's already been filled. So under the ordinance and how it's all written, she isn't eligible because she lives in the wrong area. I would like to see, yeah, just because we're turning someone down because they live in a certain area, I I would like to see us change that. That's just my comment there.
I was simply going to observe that I, I think that the, the ordinance is, is well-written and, um, broad enough to give us parameters within which we understand we need to work. And at the same time, some latitude to be creative. I don't, I don't personally don't have any issue with the ordinance. I think that we can have a really wide-ranging conversation and stay within its, the terms that are already there. Um, I don't think we need to make any change.
Okay, so I can add. I think in terms of some of the things that we could maybe be looking at is how best can we then, if we, to look at the ordinance and have make sure that we maintain it to have that flexibility that's needed because one of the things that with citizen engagement and there's up a lot, innovation, innovation. And so that we have that, those broad parameters so that we can, if we notice something and we would like to try that, that that's ability and flexibility is there for us.
I, I guess my question, innovation. Elaborate.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
You're talking about innovation. Elaborate a little bit. Zen City is pretty, I would say pretty elaborate and you guys did great as far as getting there.
It is. And I think that that's one example. And I think that to have that ability to continue with that type of innovation. And to continue with that as well as to just the simple things. I, I know I do. I like flip charts and dots and simple things, but I find too also that simple things work. People, the public is attracted to very simple things. It opens up outreach, it opens up engagement. And so to have that broad spectrum of what I call means and methods available. That that would always, that that's helpful to know and have.
One of the things that we have discussed and perhaps addresses the question you have about innovation is what are the things we can do that will, um, attract or invite or drive people to Zen City who might not be, uh, inclined to participate in that way? And what are the limitations there? Or is there a point at which we just need to say, if we're going to talk to these people, we've got to do it in another way? And what is that? We just, all of us want to be careful that we don't willfully disenfranchise someone simply because we're not willing to sort of come to where they are. Um, so I, I think there's a lot of opportunity for innovation there. Keeping Zen City is sort of the, the core of our capability.
Yeah, yes. The last one, recognize that come to where you are really resonates with me as, um, to try and have conversations in places that people gather. I'll emphasize though, it's really important that those conversations take place in, well, public spaces. Um, that generally speaking, you know, we don't necessarily have, I don't know, some private parties somewhere where we're having that conversation. These are like our farmer's market, places where a public can reach out to us. And that generally for me extends into virtual environments that generally speaking, we have conversations, I call it, uh, in places that are generally speaking accessible to the public. So, um, just I'd give you that as a quick guidance observation. Um, go forth and do good and find those places. And but just, yeah, I have good regard to say, is this place where I'm engaging someplace that generally speaking is accessible to all? Because that's just always really important interactions. I really love the concept of innovation and you guys have done it. The utility of an iPad at the, um, farmer's market didn't work out so well, right? But you tried it and now you know. See, to me, that is an accomplishment of this group and their actions. So, I mean, I check the box and say, mission accomplished, we're moving forward. Um, Robin, your observations of simplicity also resonates strongly with me. Have to tell you, um, to begin on the most basic level invites the ability to elaborate the conversation. But it's important to start really simple. So thank you in the concept of the charts and the dots and that's awesome. Gallery style is the reference for that, for enumeration of scoring, we'll call it, but, um, it's really great. Um, I heard an open call to say, give me ideas. Hey, council members, can you tell us what we're supposed to go out and try and do or try and discover? And I just had a couple. Um, Jake, I dropped a link to you. Can you put that one up on the screen for us on zooming? Uh, it's a URL and this URL is to our, um, one of our city documents. We do so many documents. Um, this particular one is, uh, let's see, our transportation improvement plan. Tip for short. Um, so this is something that we do as an exercise on an annual recurring period. And we acknowledge it's an ordinance, but what is it? Scroll down a little bit. It's an I chart that you're not going to be able to read right now. I wanted to kind of get to like, I don't know, page three. Yeah, I didn't keep walking down. It's formed as an ordinance. We have recitals, whereas, whereas, and therefore, and here. This is actually what we're going to do. This literally is what we have codified as a government to say this within the next five years are some really big numbered expense capital activities that we're going to take. And so I look at this as a great example of a defined, we'll say initiative action. Or I would love to have some engagement over. Now.
And that's precisely the kind of thing that we're looking for.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I mean, I got another, we're not done yet. Okay. So this one, this transportation improved plan honestly is honestly about the movement of people. And I say people because sometimes it's cars and sometimes it's bikes, but it's really people. And so I look at this and I think, gosh, I'd love to have some engagement over. I don't have any prescriptive go do as much as, wow, you know, if somebody could really get some understanding about what these objectives are and recognize them in their context. And then maybe help us to, I don't know, elevate or prioritize perhaps how these come together. So, um, transportation improved by. Um, I had another, if you can, Jake, there's another one in there. He threw that one up on the screen. This is an instrument, yet another document we pulled called the Capital Facilities Plan. So this is another one of these giant, you know, codified documents that city produces. And you can start walking down in this one, you eventually you get to the list, I call it. And in a familiar gesture, yeah, keep going down. It's when you get to the I chart. It has, it has a familiar set of recitals and then actions that provide description and then lots of very significant digits. Um, but what this then tries to talk about is beyond the concepts of transportation, the movements of people. There's some big things that we'd like to accomplish as a city. Big expensive things. And so this is another one. If I would love to have some more engagement over. Um, that there's some objectives here that we set out to do. And I would say with the best interest of the council members who are seated for the purpose of this document. But that'd be direct. I think that our community probably should have some more visibility or engagement with the content. It's another one that I don't have any prescriptive go do this. As much as get to know what this is and then think about how we could somehow illuminate that. How we could somehow get more eyes on that? How we could somehow get people to perceive what that is and reflect for their lived experience, what that means. Yeah, that's a good idea. Oh, that I do not recognize. Why would we do that? You know, those are the kinds of interactions that that engagement thing might be good. So that's just a quick set of ideas. You guys were asked for ideas.
And, and what would that response look like to you? So say, you know, I'm at a barefoot in the park. I bring up this conversation. They have opinions, right? You know, um, what is that? What, what am I telling them, um, that, that they have a voice in, right? Am I just relaying the opinion and that's, that's my job? That's what I'm here for? That's how I'm helping them? Or, or, or does their voice change something? And what's on the table for them to change?
I bet there is an opportunity for a facility in our community that's not on that plan right now. But it's in the minds of the arts, the people that are out there walking on street. And I'd love to get in there. Um, and I bet there's some stuff on there that people just honestly could care less. Sorry, but it's
Sure, yeah.
And, and again, I don't have any prescriptive how to do that.
Sure.
But it's like, those are the kinds of observations that I think this council is about. It could really benefit. Yeah, I, I love Robin with the dots and the flip charts. I mean, not that you could go to that, but you know.
But something more simple to try and get you that information.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just always read those big, you know, forty, fifty page documents. I'm like, you've really got to be a a walk to get in and understand what this means. But to bring this out and, you know, perspective, what people think.
And I, while we're on that topic, can I add a thought to that real, Andy, real quick? Uh, if you, I guess another thing I would when I was out there and, uh, if you encounter a recurring theme, the, the simple answer to them could be, you know what? I'll bring it to our committee and we'll have a discussion. And if, if it's worth moving on, we'll bring it to the council. Uh, so that way it takes the onus off of them to come here and do it themselves. Uh, and it, it, you know, that's the whole reason why we have you here is to you know.
And that's what, that's what I'm looking to hear is we'll being, being, having that authority to actually say, we'll bring it to council, we'll bring it to council. I think that's something that until this point, we couldn't officially maybe say that, even though that sounds ridiculous because that's in the ordinance. I think that's kind of why we're here to know that now we can really say that. And it actually is more than us maybe just creating a report and presenting it in almost in a, uh, citizen fashion, you know, at, at the meeting. So thank you. I think that
I only want seven, so.
Well, but I mean, it's, I think I, I don't think you'd be the only one to say that. I think that's kind of the point here, but we haven't officially done that yet.
Yet the ordinance in the ordinance states that we should make recommendations to the city council. But not feeling that we've had that spectrum of ability to be able to do that.
Did we answer your question? Bring it.
Yeah. So, yeah, I mean, to tag along.
So yeah, I mean, to tag along with that, I mean, like it's, it's in the ordinance. You guys have the authority. We voted on it. Please do so.
Sure.
I think that's the message.
I think it's just it's a two way street sometimes, right? So I think we know we have it, but since we haven't actually done it in any way, it feels a little strange to say we'll do it when we. When we have it. So now this is, this is, I think, the beginning of actually saying, you know, talking about a relationship out loud.
Right, well, it's a new thing. We're just, we, we're married now and we'll talk about some things, right?
And people know now, so.
So you guys had some questions and I was writing things down and this is going to be pretty disorganized, but I'm going to, I had some thoughts while you guys were writing, but. One of the first things that I heard you guys talk about was the budget, like. What should be asked for? And I think that the answer, from my perspective anyway, is what do you want to try? This is a new commission. We've given you latitude to be innovative with that scaffolding in place, to be innovative, to. To do get Zen City that, and that's not the name we use, but dynamic creative methods to engage people, right? You guys did that. You guys proposed this cost and scope and did that. We, we went on for it. But then the rest of it was identifying additional policies, procedures and things. So we want you guys to be looking at that sort of stuff. And as far as what do you want to try? How do you want to try it? I mean, budget season's coming up, so what ideas do you have? I don't, I don't know that I have an answer for or a limitation. But I think that we've got to be able to fit that into the overall budget of the city. And so if you tell us what it is you want to try, why you want to try it, how much does it cost? That's what we need to evaluate. And you know, we do that through the budgeting process. So if there are ideas that you guys have for the next year. Make sure that you're getting those, you know, through whatever chain it is at this point, so that we can see those in the budget. That would be my perspective anyway. When. I was sort of writing the ordinance. This was intended to be a scaffolding. It's not intended to be the whole house. This was intended to be, give you guys some direction, but some vagueness. So that, because we don't know. And you guys have done things that were not in my head. And I don't know that other people at the council had thought about either. So I think the innovation that you guys have done has been great. You guys have tried things. They've worked, they've not worked. And I think that's what you want, that's what I want to see continue. So I mean, the goals that I had when I proposed this were just, is basically what was in the ordinance. I think one of the biggest things that I was interested in seeing was how do you engage? Different pockets of the community, like homeowners associations. How can there be a little bit? Better, greater communication in amongst those big groups of people. But what other groups or organizations or even community groups? How, what different ways can you guys reach out to people who are already working within the community? One of the other ones was around engaging with other commissions. So how can you guys as leaders in the community engage with the other leaders in the community? And it gets an input that way. I mean, there are people that are on all these other commissions that are here, they're working hard for the city, they're volunteering their time. And I think that you guys can all, you know, get together in whatever way works for you to come up with some different ideas for the city. They've got ideas too. And then I think moving forward, again, you guys are talking about how can we, what should we be giving you? I don't know, start with something and we'll tell you if it's too much, we'll tell you if it's not enough and we'll go from there. I like the idea of working with you guys on how to better engage the public in different parts of the strategic planning process. Our capital facilities plan, our budget process. And and really the idea in my mind was to. Zen City would be kind of, you know, one of the technological ways. But what other ways can we market to the community? What are the ways can we get and give information from the community and the. Use the example of my husband who's clearly we're married, like I talked to him all the time about, but he, he is not in all the Facebook groups, like he's not. How do you, how do you engage somebody who, I mean, he goes to events and stuff, but how do you engage someone who is engageable? In the community and and get him to participate in giving you guys feedback. And how do we engage our youth? How do we engage some of our population who's not on any devices? So those are the ideas that I was hoping you guys would come up with and 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 figure out as you guys moved along. And I think I might have. Gotten through everything. And then I think you've heard some of the same things I had in my mind came out from some of the other council members too, but. Yeah, I mean, I think it's been a good first year and I'm excited for the work that you guys are doing and I appreciate the time you've put into it. You guys have put a lot of energy into it. And I hope you guys keep going. I hope there are other people that want to engage in the engagement community, commission. And so I'm looking forward to what you guys propose to us.
Thank you, Phil. As one of your prior members for a minute before I was then put on the council. I've got some ideas for you too, and I appreciate all that you've done and thank you all for. Your voice during the podcast. If I hear that voice somewhere, I know there's going to be trouble.
A terrible voice for radio.
No, it's not. It's really good. But all of you, I appreciate the work that you put into it. Robin asked a key question when she first started off and it was what is engagement? And if you, if we all took a piece of paper or if we used a flip chart and you asked us to do it. I like flip charts. We would have different answers for that. That's what Annie was talking about at the beginning. I was involved in some of the planning process for this too. I think that there's a. A couple of things that are key. And I really like the scaffolding analogy. So if you guys can build on that, you'll get it. The, the, one of the most important things for me for the community engagement commission is to inform our citizens. And and I mean about things like what Dan was just telling me and what he just put up there. Now, most of the citizens are never going to take a look at that, but citizens who ask about that. Should be directed to an answer, whether it's on our city page, whether it's through Zen City, I don't know and care. But it needs to be out there so that when they ask. If lift any of our acronyms, that that they can find what it is. So first of all, it's to inform them. And then secondly, and we, we had this happen last weekend at the farmer's market. Robin and I had no props, nothing, no, no flip charts and we still made it. We had nothing there except engaging the citizens and we never lacked for people coming by and wanting to ask questions and interact with us. I happened to write down and I'm going to put it in in our meeting, I'm going to, I'm going to put that during one of my comment periods. When people ask us questions that they have asked around, including on the community page, Wendy is, is the moderator for that. And and they don't get, either they don't get an answer or they get so many different. They're not wrong answers, they're misinformed answers from other citizens. And you know, the conversation we had just this last week, that that had so many different variables to it, so. To me, when somebody asks that question, what the second part. That I think community engagement really needs to do is to be accountable to that question, to that citizen to find the answer. We all should, not just you. We all should. And so if you can continue to do that and build on the structure. As the, as one of the founding members of another commission. It's going to take at least a year. Parks and Arts started and the council didn't know what to do with us. And and it was, we were missing. The connections, we were wondering about the direction. Here's the thing, you go in your direction. And we may follow. If we don't give you direction, that part of the scaffolding is for you to fill in. That's on us. And when you come up with the ideas, like the survey and some of the other things, it is up to us to act on those and for you to hold us accountable. To that's what the citizens have, have given you that are their priorities. And I think that I just applaud you. For the information that you got to us for the strategic, strategic plan and for the budget. Now we'll see between now and the end of the year whether we listen to you. That's not your doing, that's up to us to do. And I hope that we encourage each other to do that and then act on it. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll chime in. I would echo what council member Saul, Saulberg said as far as informing the public. Prior to be being appointed to the council. I, I didn't know Tom, but I knew him from the Nextdoor app. And I thought he was a city employee because of the information he provided. So anytime I was wondering about something going on in the River District or somewhere that I frequented. I would go on the Nextdoor and find Tom and see that he had posted something about it. So I, I think that's, I think that's the number one priority, at least in my opinion, is informing the public. The, the general public who has questions, but they, they're not going to make a call to city hall. They're not going to come to a city council meeting, they just aren't going to do that. So finding ways to reach out to the public and provide them information. That they want. So you know, I, I, I think one of those things could be that maybe we are gauging, well, what kind of calls are we getting at city hall? That are frequent, that perhaps other people might want, you know, want that answer. You know, as he was talking, I was thinking, you know, something to the effect of. Some sort of city, city. What's the word I'm looking for? Official city spot where you almost have an Ask Jeeves type of thing, like, okay. Where do I go for this official answer? Because right now it is, it's kind of scattered, you know, you, you can go on to the. The Facebook Liberty Lake Community page, you can ask a question and sometimes you'll get an answer from the mayor. You know, sometimes you'll get an answer from Jen. So maybe we figure out how to funnel that through, you know, a specific source. And you know, maybe, maybe it's David that's, that's going to provide the answer, but he, he knows who to get that answer from so that. You know, citizens know there's specific place they can go. Where they're at to provide that answer. You know, considering the engagement as far as, you know, the feedback that comes back up, you know, upstream to the city. I have some concerns regarding, you know, what, what do we determine as a statistically. A significant number of responses to any particular question that we may put out there. Because, you know, if we only have a very small percentage and I, and I realize that we are in a. Stage right now where we're testing the waters and we're getting responses. I'm hesitant to take too much action on those responses because of. The, you know, statistically insignificant number of responses we have compared to the number of citizens we have. And the fact that we don't know whether all those responses are even coming from our citizens. So that's, that's my, that's. A concern. I'm, I'm not saying that down the road that we, we shouldn't. Put more weight on those, on those responses, but that's, that's one of the concerns I have. So obviously if we can overcome that hurdle in some way, I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but that would be something I would suggest. Okay, if we can figure out, you know, what is that statistically significant number that we need to hit on any particular survey question or. Number of questions that we, you know, that that becomes actionable.
I'll chime back in. Way back when. I helped start the city up. So I'm seeing everything that we did early on, whether it was newsletters or. You know, starting up a community page. Getting those things out there to the public is important. As we go through another comp plan, that's going to be important, our five year strategic plan. Getting that information out to the public and getting their feedback is going to be critical. You know, community page has been talking about wanting to put in a pool. Sounds like an awesome idea. I got to pull my backyard and I absolutely love it. Love to go ahead and share it with everybody else, but I can't fit all 12,000 people inside my backyard. I just think as we go forward, if we can. Reach every demographic, whether it's with flip charts, any way we can do it. Let's provide what you need and figure out what you need. And maybe we can do it together. I'm really excited that you guys have been working really hard for the last year. For me, it's, it's a dream come true and to see what Annie has started way back when, before I was even appointed back onto the board. Pretty exciting. Thank you.
All right, I just. I have one, I have one comment, if I can, we still have about ten minutes, we'll take a break here, but just to follow up on something Jed said. Something I wanted to bring up. As you go forward, he's absolutely right. The, the measure is the most important part of the discussion. So and I'm not sure how you do this, but it would be great if you could, if there was some way or some, whether it's an internal. Tracking of some kind to just measure your success for your effort, I guess. And it does two things. One, it gives you credibility on, hey, we've worked our tails off on this and we got. Two percent respond. Now, a lot of it depends on the topic, of course. And here's what we did to get that. Then the next topic is, hey, we got four percent, but we changed it up a little bit. So it gives, I mean. As, as we go forward with this, with this committee, not everybody stays in these committees forever. So you, you. Eventually at some point we'll lose some history. So if you can find a way to document it for future, that would be fabulous. So a, and for me, as a council member, again, it goes back to how many people responded of the 12,000. What, six hundred and some odd people we have in the city now, so. Thank you.
I'll throw two more ideas. Consider for a second an inventory of what is recognized as groups or organizations within our community. If you could somehow, and and you could do it, but if you get started in the notion of here is a named group. What's constituents are doing? And here's a good contact mechanism. Identifying those groups to get, you know, on the outset, might allow us to then extend communications when it could be really important regarding something specifically. So every one of us have our own circles, I call it, or tribes, or whatever those words are. But you can imagine some of those might have kind of fun names. It was the five guys who meet for coffee down at Boca Pop. And they're regular and they get together. So we had that like kind of as a start as an inventory. I think we do some good things with that. I had another idea. Jake, could you get that URL again? This is one I tipped off Dave Gainer a little bit about. This one you can actually read. Scroll up a little bit. This is the city of San Dimas, California. And this is their website. And as you scroll slowly down. This is Snopes for San Dimas. It's the greatest thing. This city has taken to bringing forward what are rumors and honestly misinformation. And respond directly to it. Now, the cool part about this is each one of these little items, I call it, is uniquely asserted with a URL on address. And so that as an address can be used with no other words. In any social platform of your choice, when you see misinformation. The key is first authoritative source. Hey man, our city, we, we, we will distill the truth. And we're getting out there to the places where people make up their own answers. And when they try to drop a link, here's the answer. So, I mean, all of us have seen exhibits of this in our community, right? Somebody's spreading this and spreading that. I mean, just quickly get those commissioners and throw them together and get a real answer. Dave can facilitate that, Mark can facilitate that and get it posted. And then we can all make use of that in those places where we work. So I'll just, yeah, Snopes for Liberty Lake. Get up there on Zen City. I look forward to it.
And I would just, I want to thank David for, for giving us that for the calendar edition, because I mean, I brought to, we, we all had the same question coming to us. What day is the yard sale? What day is the yard sale? Are there two yards? What's going? And so, and that was like, okay, we have a calendar now. We have a calendar. Amazing, we didn't have a calendar that was official before. Everyone just kind of in the know. So obviously we're able to do that and, and I think that's what we're working towards. Right now, having that authority and that real answer. So thanks.
Yeah, and I also think what was said on the, what was it, the San Dimas on that? See, we are so many different things that people will talk about at the farmer's market to you, that they won't necessarily say. Anything, like if they went to a city council meeting and so. I've been trying to jot down a few things and we, with Tom and I, there with last, there's a few things on transportation and. And I've asked him if he could please present that tonight, but those are the things that. You're only going to get sometimes from the people on a one-on-one.
So before we break, any final comment? We've been doing a lot of the talking, so let's hear from you for a few minutes if you have any final comments.
I'd like to share just a couple of things. I mean, as we, as we get into a more, more of the tactical side of things on the, from, as far as how we operate. I mean, yeah, we've, so going back to Dan's, you know, a couple of points. I mean, yeah, we've, so going back to Dan's, um, you know, a couple of points, um, press potentially to build surveys on. I think tactically, as we look at X utilizing Zen City, um, to its fullest. Um, one of the, you know, I think questions that we can help answer out of this conversation today is. Um, looking at ideas and feedback from city, uh, residents that are not necessarily listed. On, um, the plans that the city's already developed, or that that's on city management's radar. Um, and how do we effectively utilize that feedback that's consistently coming back to us as, uh, as a commission? And when can we execute on that? So if we're getting constant feedback about, let's just use the pool topic as an example. If we're getting constant feedback on that. Is that something that we can utilize Zen City to push conversations forward to gather more information for city council and city leadership? And, and if not, or if so, what are those parameters that make the most sense for those discussions to actually take place? Um, that's one of the pieces I feel like would be helpful for us to have a little bit more guidance on. Um, so that we can, so that we can, you know, walk away from this and come, go back into our meeting tomorrow and. Uh, likely develop some framework that would build around these conversations today.
So I think that that's one of the, so one of the things with this, uh, the whole idea was for it not to be what. The city giving all the information to the citizens and it being transactional in nature. Where we're going to tell you what it is we were going to do and we're just telling you. What it's supposed to be is that co-production. So what, that's exactly what you're talking about is that we're getting all this information from the citizens. How do we then take action on it? But I think that that's, in my mind anyway, something that you guys are going to have to tell us. Like, what would you propose? Like, what's the process? What do you guys want to propose to us? And then bring it back to us. Again, that's my opinion. I don't know what anybody else will think, but I don't, I think you, there'd be seven different ideas of how to do that. Um, but if you guys can come up with a proposal of what that would look like, when we get an idea, what do we do with it? How do we talk about that with the council? What's the next step? In my mind, that would be helpful. Yeah.
Final comments? None?
So I'll, I'll jump in and make a last comment just to, to give, uh, some more. Um, kind of credence to some of the comments about what has happened over the last year plus. So, uh, the recommendation to bring on the engagement platform, obviously a big deal. Uh, that was one of the biggest accomplishments, but that wasn't the only one. There have been others. There was, uh, a lot of discussion about the creation of the city academy, which has now. Been formed, we've gone through one graduating class and also the creation of the podcast. And so. From an engagement standpoint, those two things fall in that we're, we're kind of telling you what's going on. Now we're, obviously you've heard the conversation and provided the input. The next step is now to take that into that full spectrum of co-production. That over the next several years, we hope to really get up rolling and get some momentum behind. So that's what we're looking forward to. Um, I don't want to speak for the commission members, but I, I think that's been what's needed with respect to hearing from councils so that they know. How to kind of formulate their plans going forward, so.
And I would agree, Mark. I think that definition or that helps with that just definition of what does co-production mean to you? Cause we can all have different interpretations. I had a different interpretation, so that was helpful to define that. In about a few weeks from now, the ordinance says there will be a written report. And it'll contain a little bit of basic introduction, some accomplishments. That we've done, some future items, and then we'll have a budget. And hopefully, last year we got a pass on that because we had not been actually even. Around for a year, so we couldn't add that much. But so this year I hope that the written report. It'll be first one and we'll be able to work through that together, which was awesome.
Great. All right. Well, thank you, everybody for attending and great feedback and we'll move on. Yeah.
And thank you for your feedback.
We'll take five.
They're so great in this area and, um, that, that we have a wonderful place to live. We, uh, pray for all of these blessings this evening in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, we'll move into roll call, um. Um, Councilmember Curtis. Uh, Councilmember Van Norman.
Here.
Um, so Member Foliers here, House Member Spencer.
Present.
House Member Dunn.
Happy to be here.
House Member Solberg.
Here.
And, uh, Councilmember Carl Cargill has a work conflict, so can we get a motion to excuse her?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to our agenda approval. I'll start off. If nobody has any objections, I'd like to. Uh, make a motion to move general business items 10 D, F and G to, um, general business item 11.
Second.
Any just discussion on those three? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any other amendments to our agenda? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda as we just, just did.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Awesome. Thank you very much. Citizen comments, three minutes, please, and state whether you're a resident. Thank you. Well, now he wants to talk. I say. Mark Saba, please.
Doesn't sound like it. No, it's on. Mark Saba, I am a resident of Liberty Lake. I'm proud to be one for 20 years. I'm gonna, I gotta publicly thank, uh, a few people for last Saturday or week ago last Saturday, Barefoot in the Park. What a success. I mean, it was a fun day. And, um, we were fortunate enough to bring back, uh, Touch a Truck. I want to thank the two Trevers, Reagan and Sloke and Derek for setting that all up. Uh, if it wasn't for them, we would not have had Touch a Truck at the event. Um, we also had a new, uh, a new thing out there this year is the Dunk Bucket. I'd like to thank Mayor Kaminsky's. Chief Simmons, Deputy Chief Morgan. Uh, Councilmember, Mr. Spencer over there, they all gave us their time to get wet. And the Ridgeline Band raised $1,600 in that five hours. Pretty, pretty cool, pretty cool deal. Uh, they are definitely going to be back next year. Um, we also had a golf cart parade. I'd like to thank again Mayor Kaminsky's and Mr. Solberg over here. For doing the judging. Uh, Tom also helped, him and Joe helped with the registration. Um, the, the golf cart parade was a little smaller than we anticipated, but it, it went off with a pretty. It was a pretty cool deal. The winner was unbelievable. It was the Mike Hamlet family. Their, 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 uh, their, uh. Golf cart was Gilligan's Island. And they had everything from the skipper. To Ginger, to, if you looked at his mom and dad, there was Lovey and Thurston Howell III. So. Again, um, I'd like to thank everybody who did volunteer. It was a fun event. Let's make it better next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, citizen comments in the chambers? Anybody online? All right, we'll move right along. Thank you. Uh, we have no announcements, proclamations, express special presentations. We'll move on to item eight. Uh, reports and inquiries, city council.
Yeah, I'll just make another pitch for, uh, Barefoot this past week, uh, two weekends ago now. Um, couldn't do it outside of staff. Um, also my same recognition for the two Trevers and the, and the rest of the city that supported the work. Um, we were able to present a, uh, car show that has gained in such, uh, I say, notoriety around the community. A hundred and a few cars out on the grass, uh, created a great afternoon for a lot of people and a wonderful fundraiser for, uh, the Liberty Lake Kiwanis. So. Um, interestingly, people were missing the hot dogs out of the hot dog stands, so I guess we'll bring that back next year. We thought we'd leave that to the food trucks, but, um, yeah, it was a very successful event and I'm very grateful for the work of the staff.
Uh, I have one to share with the group. I, I don't have a report, I just have an inquiry. So after our last, uh, council meeting. Uh, on our consent agenda items, um. There was some, a little bit of discussion about asking questions during that period during a consent agenda item on our agenda. So I sent a message to MRSC actually, and, uh, here's what I asked them. My, my question was, we include certain types of ordinary business in our consent agenda section for council meetings to assist with time management. Understand that any topic in the consent agenda is not to be debated. However, some members. Sometimes have a simple question and ask clarification regarding a consent agenda item. Is there any reason not to allow these types of inquiries on the items so long as they don't become a debate or turn, turn into a discussion? And I, I know myself, I'm guilty of this. I've asked questions on our, our ledger of what do we spend, what's this money for? Uh, just a simple question. Uh, the response was there are no state laws that address how much discussion can be allowed on a consent agenda item. From a legal standpoint, if the city council wants to allow questions to staff before asking for items to be removed. From the consent, consent agenda, it's entirely up to the group. However, noted parliamentarian, and she's been here before, Anne McFarlane, um, says. The key point is that if anybody wants to comment or discuss in any way whatsoever, it is immediately re- removed and placed on the regular agenda. So the way I read that and I'd like some feedback from the council is, is any, I mean, I. I like being able to ask a simple clarification question. In my mind, if it goes to a debate, then yeah, it needs to be in, in the, uh, general items list, but how does everybody, how does everybody feel about that? Does any? Anybody feel strongly one way or the other?
I agree that you should be able to ask questions and, and make a comment. And. I think which went too far, the pendulum just swung too far the other way by trying to get everything quickly done. And we just need to come back to being reasonable.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think the ability to ask some questions to, and, you know, cause I thought about, well. You know, maybe, maybe council members should send the question to whatever city staff member that it associates with. Ahead of time, but I like the idea of bringing it forward in council meeting because there may be something that somebody didn't think of. And then perhaps maybe we do want to move it to the general business.
Fair enough. Comments? Yes?
Yeah, I think if we can all disagree, if we feel like it's a quick question, we'll leave it on the consent agenda, but if we think we want, might want to talk about it, then let's move it down.
And it seems like the theme, just so we can, because I know we're trying to speed up our meetings and I very much appreciate that. I think everybody does. I, I've noticed, uh, Kelsey, when you send out the rough draft, it's. The last two times now, it has been, if we want to make any changes, we do it in our agenda approval. So is that how we're going to roll going forward? Um, or obviously some of the, the ones that are obvious discussion items, you'll just put them in the general, uh, 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 agenda item. Is that what you're? Thinking or? Cause I, 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 I know the mayor's not here tonight. I'm not looking to sit, throw her under the bus, but she said, hey. If you want to make changes, let us know beforehand, but, um. Sometimes we don't have the opportunity. I mean, it's a limited time, so.
So if, I'd say an example, we moved items from consent to action today pretty quickly. And I don't have any concerns about that. I think that would be an intended action in the future. If you see something you think that needs more than a simple question. Just take an action, the agenda set, say move to, move to action.
Only bring it up so we're all thinking the same way. Okay, great, thank you.
So, from the standpoint of, um.
It did say consult with your attorney, but I left that.
Yeah, no, I understand. I understand. Um, this is all about standpoint of just the city council rules. So the rules of consent agenda allow the council members to, to move it. I think. Intent from the mayor is if it's on there, the idea is there's not any issues, we're going to go and go through it and be done with it. But the rules themselves, which would trump. Roberts rules because the city's own rules say these are our rules to the extent that Roberts rules, um, apply because our rules don't. Address the issue, then Roberts rules will apply. But the consent agenda in the city's, uh, council rules procedure. Allow for any council member to request that an item be removed, just like it was done today.
Right, yeah. I mean, I guess my question was a simple clarification question. Do we, do we need to move it to general business if it's something simple? I, I was hoping not, but. Are you saying that we need to?
I don't think you probably necessarily need to. I think the easiest is to keep it clear so there isn't an issue if an issue did come up. Because if, if you ask a question and then it creates an issue as a result of your question, then there might be more dialogue. So.
At that point, even Anne McFarlane says immediately you move it to general.
And that's the point. I think that's what she's getting at is if you ask a question, well, that may raise questions with other council members. So if you have a question, just move it at the beginning. And then anybody else can address it in regular business.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Uh, uh, some, my time is going to be given to some of the concerns from the, uh, farmer's market. That are going to weigh into our discussions as we move forward into the budget. And into decisions about a master transportation plan. I'm not going to give the names of the people, but one of the questions. Uh, really good question was at Rocky Hill and Mission, uh, the speed limit, um, needs to be looked at being lowered because it is a public park and we've done that. Near Orchard Park, we've got it down to 20 miles an hour now. The people that live in Rocky Hill, it's a recurring theme. It's something that we hear complaints about all the time. Uh, and I told them that, um, we certainly, I'll continue to push for a transportation plan, which includes a review of speed limits and things like that. The second one was a concern about near misses. Uh, and I, I, this is not just limited to pedestrian safety, but for those of you that live up in Legacy. The Legacy Ridge Drive, uh, Stanford Lane, Country Vista, when people are going, again, speed is the issue there. And when people are going so fast, uh, near misses, and they just wanted to have some sort of a. Traffic safety plan. Both of the citizens had the same thing. We didn't solicit that. Another one that, um, we had that I think plays into, we don't have anybody here from the fire department this time, but. We're under, uh, one of the highest alerts we've ever been under. And the citizen brought to our, our attention the weeds that are along some of the streets that are our streets. And it's not just the weeds and the look of the weeds, it's the safety for somebody flipping out a lit. Item or having a chain from a trailer drag along and start a spark. And so, um, I talked to Travis Loken this morning at oh dark 30 when he was out working and I was walking. And he said that at one point we were trimming those weeds along, um, Country Vista, Mission and Appleway. Those are the three areas that are of concern, ridge, ridge line and the weeds there was what the citizen brought up. Um, and that he said, um, that the council had, uh, provided the, the staff. A really nice, it's like a Roomba, um. Mower. Do you remember when we had on the agenda that we passed something that was sort of looked like AI type, it's going to go out and do its own thing? I don't know that it's going to be too staff intensive for us to do it, but it's just certainly something we should take a look at. Um, and, and from a trap, from a fire safety standpoint, as well as the look of our city. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, I will echo that. I actually heard from a citizen, uh, that rides their bike regularly on Appleway and. Those weeds are even into the bike lane and stuff, so it's crazy, but, uh, the other thing I will mention, I was able to attend. Uh, over at the, uh, police station, it's called the LETS training, which I'm assuming is law enforcement training simulator. Is that what it stands for? I, I did it last year and did it again this year, um, and that was with Clear Risk, our insurance provider. They provide this training. Uh, as part of the, the service, uh, to our law enforcement, they're given, uh, situations, uh, to. To, you know, learn how to approach, uh, different individuals and things. And I just want to emphasize the, um. The risk that, that these individuals put themselves in every day, uh, because they are always in a responsive. Or a reactionary, uh, situation. Individuals intending to commit crimes, they've already made some sort of decision and as law enforcement, they are. They've already made some sort of decision and as law enforcement, they are, you know, from the time the call is made and to the time they have to respond. They are having to react. So I just want to say I, I'm thankful being put in those situations, having a. Uh, you know, having a fire, a fake firearm, uh, or a training firearm in that simulator. And, you know, being faced with having to make certain decisions in split seconds. I, I have a greater appreciation for the, the risk that they are involved in every day.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
Um, I was able to attend, uh, the same training with Jed, um, and Jed said it way more eloquently than I will apparently. Cause I'm stumbling over the word frequently, um, but it was a really great opportunity to, um, just experience even for twenty minutes. Um, without the significant training that law enforcement officers go through and without understanding all the laws and the regulations and the policies, the procedures. That they have to do, um, to respond to something. And so, um, uh, thank you, chief, uh, for allowing us to attend.
Right. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll move right along. Uh, I received nothing from the mayor. Did you receive anything from the mayor as far as the report goes?
I didn't, no.
Uh, and then we'll move on to the city administrative report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So, uh, before I get started with the report, um, I, I want to. Uh, do a couple of acknowledgements. One, after we adjourn, uh, August fifteenth is what is called. And has been for the last eight years or so, City Hall selfie day. So after we adjourn, I want to get a selfie with everybody so that we can post it online and participate in that. Um, I also want to acknowledge, uh, Jacob Norris on our IT systems. Uh, he's kind of been thrown into the, the fire and is performing admirably. So let's all give him a, a reminder of thanks when we can. Um, we've got the Liberty Lake Throwdown coming up on August nineteenth. Uh, the registration for that is passed, but that's going to be out at Orchard Park and from what I understand, always a great time. Shakespeare in the Parks is back on August twentieth in Pavilion Park and they're doing Three Musketeers. And as we were talking about this, David, uh, said to me, is that a Shakespeare? And I said, I don't think so. Um, and so, uh, we had a laugh about that, but it's Three Musketeers. So that should be a great show out on the, uh, Sunday, the twentieth. Uh, and then shortly after that, between now and the next time we meet is going to be the Spokane Symphony Concert, which is a hugely pop, popular event. And if you'll recall, last year it had to be moved because of the smoke. We've got a contingency plan in place. Uh, for, for that happening again, uh, hopefully it won't, but that is scheduled right now for September, the second in Pavilion Park. And before I get too, uh, far into the events and reminders, I want to stop there and, and say again, like you heard Mark say, like you heard a couple of the council members say. None of these events would be possible without, whether, whether they're sponsored by the city or put on wholly by the city without the staff. And so, uh, considering that today was in the hundred and five range and we've got that weather for the next week or so. These, uh, ladies and gentlemen are out doing all of this work in all kinds of conditions. And so, uh, when you see one of them out there, just, uh, make sure to, to, to thank them. They're the ones that keep everything rolling. And keep that service delivery going to the level that we expect. So thank you all for the work that you do. Uh, next item, Labor Day Holiday, uh, believe it or not, that's coming between now and the next meeting. Uh, Monday, September fourth and observance of that, City Hall and the library will be closed. And, uh, Central Valley Schools will be, uh, beginning on September the seventh. So traffic patterns will change again, um, and to, uh, Councilmember Solberg's point. Uh, everybody needs to keep that in mind and kind of back off of the accelerator as you're going through town. Uh, with respect to events and reminders, any questions?
Yes, sir. We're still on track for the overpass to be open before school starts.
We are, and I've got that one as a, uh, item down farther in the agenda, but yes, to answer the question, absolutely. Any other questions about events? Okay. So we're going to move on, uh, to the department reports. We've distributed those and now would like to offer council the opportunity to ask any questions.
Looks like none.
Looks like none. All right. Um, very well. Uh, critical incident road closures. This, uh, again is kind of in this theme of, of things that go on on our roadways. And so I'd like to invite Chief Simmons up to the podium and give you a briefing. Thanks, chief.
Good evening. Um, recently we've had several, um, incidents that, uh, have. Caused us to have either a partial or a complete closure of our roadways. Um, so tonight I want to start with the why. I think that's important. There's three primary reasons why we block, partially block off a road or completely block off a road and, uh, during an incident. Uh, first and foremost is for the safety, uh, of, um, of the victims on scene. Witnesses, potential witnesses on scene and the emergency services personnel on scene. That's our first and, and primary, um, reason for doing that. Second of all is for the preservation of evidence. So, um, depending on the size of the incident or incident, we have to. In order to investigate an incident completely, um, we have to preserve the evidence. And sometimes that means we have to block off a road. Sometimes that mean we have to block off a road for a short period of time. And sometimes, as Tom knows, you have to block off a road for an extended period of time. I know that is an inconvenience to our citizens of our city and I apologize ahead of time. It's going to happen again. Uh, at this time last year, uh, when we, when I first kind of started really getting really in depth with our, with my flock audits, um, every couple of weeks. We were averaging about eight hundred thousand plate hits, uh, on our flock system. We haven't increased our cameras. We're over one million plate hits now every month on our flock cameras. So it, it appears anecdotally that our, our traffic is increasing and that's expected. Our population is growing here in Liberty Lake, Post Falls population is growing, the valleys population is growing. We have a lot of traffic. We have a lot of people jumping off I ninety using our businesses. We have a lot of people traveling through our city. And of course, again, our population is growing. So, uh, with that amount of traffic, when we talk about just collisions, which we've seen. I think, um, I, I think we, we're under and I'll have to do the, 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 uh, research on it. I think overall, we haven't had as many collisions this year as we had last year, but I think the severity of the collisions are increasing. And so, um, I can get those numbers to you if you want to see it. I can do my research in the next city council meeting. We can, I can come back and, and give back to you if you wish. Um, but there are also other incidents. We have other critical incidents, um, crimes, um, that occur where we have to block off. The, the streets. And so again, I apologize ahead of time, but there's a reason why we do it. If citizens have any questions or concerns, they can always contact me at the police department or Deputy Chief Morgan at the police department. We can give them answers directly if they have any concerns. And also on scene, if they, they're just lost, they don't know what to do, they need to know if they need to wait. Don't be afraid to safely outside of our crime scene or incident scene. Wave over an officer and say, hey, I, I don't know where I'm going or I, I, I don't know if I can, I can, you know. Go around to get to where I'm going and we, we always assist. We always assist and we will tell you either you have to stand by or. Do you have an iPhone or a phone with a map or we'll, we'll give you directions. So, um, again, it's something that occurs. It's going to occur in the future and I know it's an inconvenience, but there are the reasons why we do it. So.
Any questions?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief. So one of the things I'd like to add to that is, and, and you'll see this, uh, come up, uh, as part of the budget discussion. And certainly part of the strategic planning discussion is that we're going to adopt a, a vision zero strategy. And so we're, we're a small city. However, that doesn't mean that we can't take a look at some of these things to help. Uh, design and force and educate our way to having zero traffic and pedestrian fatalities. And so that's a goal, uh, but that's something that because of some recent activity, we're going to need to take a serious look at. And so, um, we're going to be putting that forward at some point.
And also from an internal standpoint, a departmental standpoint, um, we have a plan in place right now to maximize a couple of positions. To help address, uh, through education and enforcement, uh, our traffic issues and some other, um, issues that we're having, uh, in the city. That our normal patrol officers, uh, because of their normal duties aren't able to address at all times, especially when they're busy and we're busy. So.
Thanks, chief. All right. Kramer Overpass ribbon cutting. Uh, so we have got this, uh, now pinned in. It's, it's a firm date on the calendar of Saturday, September the ninth at ten AM. Uh, so there will be announcements going out tomorrow, uh, to a wide range of, of folks, including the, the city council. And some other, uh, groups. And so part of this is going to be, and more information to come. Uh, about this particular part, but just to let everyone know what we're planning, we're going to have a, a bike rodeo. Um, and so what this is going to include is the invitation for people to start on the south side. Um, of the overpass, ride over it, go around the roundabout and come back, which round trip is right at a mile. It's a little less than a mile. And so we're going to incorporate that into the ribbon cutting. And so there will be a lot more information coming out about the ribbon cutting. But it is a, it is firmly scheduled now for Saturday, September the ninth at ten AM. Uh, for more information about another ribbon cutting, this one at Trailhead, uh, I'm going to invite Chris Johnston, if he's online. Or if not Kyle Dixon to come up. Okay. So Kyle's going to update you on this.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Mayor Protem Council. So the two, um, that were taking the lead on the Trailhead ribbon cutting. Were both the mayor and our, uh, pro shop lead, Chris Johnston. Uh, so it doesn't sound like he is on tonight. And so we'll share that information out in more detail through all of our socials. And with council, once that agenda gets finalized. I do know that it's going to be Tuesday, August twenty ninth at one PM. And so, uh, again, more details to follow. We'll have, uh, the mayor speak. We'll have, uh. The Spokane Valley Chamber of Commerce will be there. Uh, so they'll have, uh, a role in, uh, what that looks like. But, um, we'll, we'll share more details as those get finalized, uh, through either Chris or the mayor.
But that is a firm day, uh, August twenty ninth. That's two weeks from today at, did we say one PM? One, one PM. Yeah. One PM, yes. Any other questions about that? All right. Thanks, Kyle. Okay. And now I'm going to invite, uh, Lisa. I know she's virtual here, uh, to give you an update on the Sprague overlay. Traffic Improvement Board application. Lisa?
Mayor, council members.
Sorry, did I give you the wrong acronym?
It's the Transportation Improvement Board, CIB. So, um, consistent with what we, um, proposed. In our, um, in our transportation improvement program this year. Um, we have, uh, submitted an application for, uh, the TIB. Grant for Sprague Avenue Overlay. Um, it's a, it's a, the total cost for the project is, uh, six hundred and fifty four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. And we are proposing a twenty-five percent, uh, match because that maximizes our points. And, um, we tend to be much more successful when we do that. Um, the project, um, uh, is proposed to, now you, you've already authorized. Uh, the design for this project that, um, we won't find out about the, whether or not we've been approved for the grant until November. But we are on track to have the design completed this year, bidding to begin in January of next year. With the overlay to occur in the summer and it's going to include, uh, uh, patching areas with Allegra Gator cracking. Installing a pre-level smooth, um, uh, and smooth out rutting, um, and install a two-inch overlay. Uh, within the project limits. Um, we will also be doing some stormwater improvements at that time. And that design is being, uh, it will be, um, addressed as part of our stormwater master plan. That'll happen at the same time with the funding for the, uh, for the stormwater improvements to come out of. Our Aqua for Protection and, uh, Stormwater Funds. So those are, those are dedicated, uh, capital, uh, project lines specifically for that purpose. So, um, uh, fingers are crossed, but we will find out in November for sure, um, whether or not we have, uh, secured the grant. For Sprague Avenue. And again, the project is from Multer Avenue to Gage Road. Um, any questions?
That's one. Uh, I, I assume if the application is denied, the design, it will sit on the shelf and is good for some time.
So the, um, again, this will be a decision that, uh, city council needs to make. Uh, but, um, we actually, uh, have it funded in our, um, transportation improvement program to happen next year. We did express the intent to apply for the TIB grant, but, um, we, um, the, the road is falling apart. And if we don't do this now, we will be doing a, uh, full rebuild on the road.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to our last item, um, you all received, uh, a binder from me, um, yesterday. And I wanted to give you at least a day to take a look at that. And today's preview isn't going to be, uh, anything more than giving you an opportunity to ask any questions about that. So that a week from now, when we're in the workshop, we don't, uh, we, we can minimize the amount of time talking about that binder. So. As you saw on there, there are a couple of things that we need to, to, to discuss that, that we need consensus on during the. August twenty-second workshop. Um, and between now and then, if any questions come up, I'll be happy to sit down with anyone, one-on-one, talk through email or phone. And of course, if you have questions about the binder tonight, we can, we can go through some of those. All right. In that case, uh, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move right along. Uh, Parks and Arts Commission. Thank you, Mark.
Get my iPad up and running here. Of course, it was open the entire time I was waiting, right? Good evening. I'm David Heimbaugh with the Parks and Arts. I'm co-chair, uh, happy to be here. This is the one opportunity the entire year that I get to present because I'm normally teaching classes at the hub. But we shut down in August. So sometimes I don't know what to do with myself on Tuesday and Thursday, but, uh. Lo and behold, here I am. So, um, I wanted to share with you some updates. Uh, not much has changed, but we have a few new things. So the first thing is the Hoop Town mural. So as most of you have seen, if you attended. Um, Barefoot in the Park, you saw that it was, uh, painted to the initial color. So there's been some slight delays because of the heat this morning, though, uh, the artist was able to go out and add a little bit of color to that. So you should see, start to see some changes taking place. Um, we are, uh, set for, uh, the end of September as completion. With the, some contingency that, you know, it may go over, just really depends upon the weather. So that's, uh, the first thing. The second item on the PowerPoint there, you'll see the story walk Orchard Park update. So, um, I want to thank Spokane Valley Tech, uh, under the instruction of, uh, Mark Bits who just retired. Uh, this crew put together an amazing amount of hours, if you saw the hours that they put through. It was something like two hundred and twenty hours to put this project together. So the story walk stands there will be installed, uh, hopefully this month, but it may go into early September. You'll notice that they are the colors of Orchard Park, which are the colors of our flag. So that will be, uh, those will be installed and you can see where the loop will, will start there. Right next to the parking lot there, and then it will go back, uh, all the way almost to the, uh, the snack shack area there. So I'm also in contact with Michaela. So I want to thank the library for being on top of, uh, letting. Uh, us have, you know, the yea or nay with the, the books that are put through there. So the idea initially was to have books that kind of went along with the season. But now that we have a second, uh, story walk to be installed, we want to make it maybe a little bit different than what the books are that are, uh, in place. At Rocky Hill Park. So be on the lookout, that will be installed and they just turned out wonderful as you can see by the picture there. The third item is the skate park. So we hope that city council tonight approves, uh, the contract for that. So we're proposing, uh, to use some of our, uh, uh, under utilized funds. Um, as some of you may know from the last, uh, presentation or maybe the presentation before, one of the artists that submitted. For, uh, the Hoop Town. Submitted items, uh, that were maybe a bit, a little bit too busy to be selected for the Hoop Town mural. So we came back to him with the idea of, why don't we dress up in graffiti eyes, if that's a word? Uh, the skate park. So to detract deferred from, uh, deter, uh, from. Kids, uh, putting graffiti on that. So you're going to see some, some mockups there as you can see of how that will look. And, um, we'll be presenting that tonight and hopefully that will be approved. That is scheduled to be completed on the fifteenth. So, uh, we have a lot of other things that we're planning. So uh, we have a lot of other things that we're planning. As you guys know, we uh, are very active, uh, and we have been from the very start. But we'll save those ideas for later on. Can I answer any questions for anybody?
Looks like not. Thank you very much.
How many times, David?
Yeah.
Thanks for your work.
Alright, moving right along then. Anything further from the Community Engagement Commission?
The answer is yes. I'm Bill Norman and um, our, our chairperson, uh, Robin Beckdahl asked me to be, to make our report tonight. Uh, I will acknowledge that we just had the opportunity prior to this meeting of meeting with the city council. Uh, this marks the, the first year of our operation as a group. And so we were grateful for the chance to not only report to the city council then, but to uh, pursue some additional clarity uh, between the city council and the Community Engagement Committee with regard to um, the uh, ordinance and, and how that, how our activities might look. We are pleased to have been involved uh, in raising awareness of the uh, strategic plan survey. Uh, we tried, some of the things we tried didn't seem to work so well, but we were very pleased with the response that was generated by these little uh, flyers that we handed out at the farmer's market and that what we made available also at the uh, uh, Kiwanis Information Booth for the yard sale and at the library um, book sale. Uh, we're going to use those also as we move forward with the twenty-twenty-four budget development, public outreach. Uh, we're, we're really um, working to discover ways that we can reach the community, invite their engagement and uh, get to people that might not otherwise participate. Of course, the farmer's market is a great opportunity for that. And we're looking for other ways to get this, get these messages in front of our citizens. Barefoot in the Park, uh, I, I think that it was good just to have uh, city staff there and members of the Community Engagement Commission. Uh, there's something about just being visible. And we had a wonderful experience with our rock painting. Really some amazing talent there, in addition to just a lot of cute kids. One of the things that I took away from that is that really it's a miss if we don't do something in conjunction with all of these things to invite public comment or engagement. So we're learning and uh, we'll do better with those things. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, would you like sewer and water? Put you online? Looks like not. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, item nine, workshop discussion. Thanks again, Mayor Pro Tem Council. Uh, so this is kind of, we're, we're gonna put a bow on this discussion that we've had regarding um, insurance, uh, property and liability risk management uh, that we really started last November when we got our premiums from CIAW. And we had seen, I would say, a forty-two percent increase over the previous two years, which was just too big to ignore. And so whether or not we were going to intend to change companies, uh, I, I think was secondary. We just needed to see what else was out there and do our due diligence, see what the market provided, see what other companies were providing. And we did that. So over the course of the spring, we reached out to the three major insurance carriers in Washington. So our current one CIAW, WCIA, and our MSA is through the Association of Washington Cities was the third one that we reached out to. And so uh, AWC was, I think, competitive with our current carrier, but I didn't think that that necessitated further discussion because we were happy with our current carrier. Just, we were looking for um, some more beneficial pricing on, on our annual premiums. And so this has essentially led us here. So we got a um, presentation from our current insurance carrier, presentation from our perspective uh, insurance carrier, WCIA. And it, I, I think you can truly say this was an apples to apples. They, they provide really similar coverage across the board. There are tweaks here and there. WCIA has the benefit of substantially more assets, so they are able to self-insure to a greater degree than CIAW. And I think that is the reason you see such a substantial difference in their prices. And so you see, if you go through each one's liability and, and piece it out, liability through L and I, that's a pretty, that's an easy one to couch. Uh, where you see a lot of cost savings is where WCIA comes in and self-insures and you see these premiums drop. And so I don't think we need to pro- uh, prolong this discussion. This could have lived maybe in an action item to get direction from council on where to go. But really, the, the, the story of this workshop is staff's recommendation on a path forward. And it is my recommendation that we engage with WCIA and join their pre-membership program and look to make a change in twenty-twenty-four for coverage. Uh, because as you have seen, you know, none of this is new information, save for the one thing that we were waiting for, for CIAW. And they're anticipating another twelve to nineteen percent increase in premiums next year. So you're, you're seeing, you know, annual premiums on the order of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars as opposed to maybe a nominal increase in some property values after WCIA does appraisals on our property. Uh, we're not gonna see anything over probably three hundred and seventy thousand from them because of the liability and the quote that you see built into your packet here is for twenty-twenty-four. So I, I don't wanna make it any more complicated than that, but I do wanna entertain any questions if council has any. I, I think this is a I, I think this was an easy decision for staff, given, uh, I don't wanna say that. We've had a great relationship with CIAW. We have had no complaints. They are fantastic in their claims handling process. I reached out to six other entities that are currently with CI, or WCIA. And um, I got five-star reviews across the board. Some interaction that I was expecting to take five minutes took twenty-five minutes because they were giving me a litany of all the reasons why they would never, ever consider somebody else besides WCIA. So we, we've gotten that, I think, on the other end from our comparables as well. So given all this information, um, I, I would like to recommend that we do make that change. But given we have entered this in a workshop discussion, like to see it close in a workshop discussion and answer any questions you guys might have.
Uh, the one question that you have is probably what's on every single city council member's mind. Golf course. Did you go over the scenarios? And what was the outcome?
Absolutely. So they've seen our ten-year profit-loss history. They've seen all of our claims for the last ten years. They're very well aware of where we're at with our current building, where we're at with our poles and netting. And uh, their onsite risk management is quite a bit more robust than CIAW. So you will see insurance staff from WCIA onsite. Uh, certainly during, during our build-out process as we enter this pre-membership program. And given that uh, they have, I think in their portfolio, I, I, I don't wanna say a number, they have several golf courses in their portfolio. So they know how to handle these types of situations.
Uh, Kyle, I didn't line them up side by side, but uh, typically when there's this big of a difference between the premium, it's deductibles, it's
Right.
per, per occurrence, coverage, and the exclusions. And in my world, it's the exclusions that get people.
Sure.
So uh, I'm, I'm, can you speak to, are, are they straight up across the board?
They are straight up across the board with a couple of exceptions, and I can outline those if you would like. So the cyber coverage is covered at a million dollars. With WCIA, it's covered at five million, given certain circumstances through CIAW. And you pay for that. So you pay an added premium for that coverage. We can go out and get our own coverage for cyber if we feel like that is a priority for us to get that full five million dollar coverage. That's gonna be probably twenty or thirty thousand dollars, if they even allow it. But um, so that's another cost savings measure that I think when WCIA put this policy together, we'll have a blanket policy, but we're only covering a million. And so uh, to that extent, there's a little bit more robust coverage on CIAW's side, I would say, than WCIA. Uh, you can look at some of the others. So liability, there's a thousand dollar member deductible through CIAW. There's a zero dollar deductible through WCIA. So, and so you'll, you'll see those kind of as you run down some of these comparables where it's some are covered at zero, some are covered at a thousand. Equipment loss is both ten thousand, so.
But it's relatively close.
Very, very close, yes.
My, my only other question, I guess, is uh, it, uh, the way I read it, it's a three-year commitment.
Correct. So uh, looking at the assets and looking at the self-insured portion of WCIA, I feel a lot more comfortable about their ability to weather these increases rather than leveraging every, every single one of your policies is beholden to some third-party insurer that you're going out and getting prices from. So I, I would say that WCIA is more insulated than CIAW to these annual increases. And so if we make the change, we're gonna save, I would say, on the order of forty-five percent in a single year. And so we can see, all of a sudden, if we're getting uh, you know, these twenty percent increases year over year after twenty-twenty-four, we're already in year two, year three. So we can start looking again. If that's the case, and, and every single insurance provider, and, and I agree to them with an extent, you don't just wanna go price shop every three years. It is, to an extent, about building relationships and getting comfortable with your provider. Um, but this was just too big to ignore, so.
And uh, you're not gonna be able to answer, but your gut says this is not just a, I'm gonna come in low and get their business and
No. So if this was a company that had, you know, fifteen cities and they were a startup and they were just trying to get their, their foot in the door, I could say absolutely. But um, CIAW currently has sixty-four cities on their roster. WCI has a hundred and twenty, so. So they, they've been around for longer. They have the assets to weather this. And so I, they would, there would be a massive upheaval if that was the case.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Mark, sorry, Kyle, can you explain a little bit about how often you interact with the current insurance company, aside from just writing checks for premiums? How many times does staff, you know, interact with?
Weekly, I'd say. So it is a, it is a huge deal. And so, and the, the model that both insurance companies uses is identical. You have a dedicated insurance or account representative. So we had Blair, uh, Coke that showed up here for CIAW. We're in contact with him, either myself, Lisa, Jen, anybody uh, in a position on a, either a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis. Um, discussing claims, discussing uh, any sort of pre-litigation as that comes up. And so that's a very, very important piece of this is having that dedicated rep that you have their email, you have their phone number, and you can contact them right away. And WCIA provides the same thing.
And you felt like that kind of interaction could be um, successful with WCIA as well?
Absolutely. And so, and, and another thing that WCIA does, they have a much more robust budget in terms of training, onsite training, pre-litigation program. Their pre-litigation program is five times the amount that CIAW is. And they don't have a cap on use. And so um, i- if you run into a cap, then all of a sudden that, that can, that has the potential to terminate. But WCIA has five times the amount and they, they would never have a cap on, or they wouldn't ever cut off services if they hit that cap. So it's um, I've looked at it a million different ways and, and trust me, if we could keep CIAW for any sort of, I, I guess, premium that is, I guess, tolerable, I would recommend that. But this is, I, I think, apples to apples, top to bottom. You have one company that has so much more assets and so many more cities under their roster, they're able to accommodate a much lower rate with that self-insurance.
Uh, I'll just add from my perspective, uh, having listened to both presentations and looked, looked at the data and everything. Um, WCIA, uh, I, I really like the fact that it's member-owned and uh, you know, I, from a financial standpoint, I've always, uh, I was involved in credit unions and saw the difference in, in the, you know, the focus of that group. And so us being, you know, members of that organization, owning that, that uh, organization and, and the board, same thing. The, the goal is to make sure that we all thrive as cities. So I, I really like that.
And they uh, yeah, they, they keep tabs on their members. So if we are all of a sudden not a, not playing well in the sandbox, they'll boot us, so. And they do that with any other city. And so I think that's a, that's another positive, that they can keep their premiums under control because um, they're not subsidizing bad actors with good actors, so. Any other questions?
Not a question. He said he wanted to finish it. Can we make a motion?
Well, that was my question is, uh, Mark, we talked about this earlier. Are you looking to bring this back for an agenda item at our next meeting? Or do you wanna take action now?
So uh, Kyle's gonna walk through the timeline and then you can hear all of those details.
So if it's um, so i- if it's the direction we wanna proceed with WCIA, I can reach out to them and join what's called their pre-membership program. And we can officially engage them there. And that can, I think that would be a simple motion, second action item tonight, to join their pre-membership program. That gets the wheel started for them to then send us, because we do automatic renewals with CIAW. And we sent them a one-year notice. We would do something similar to the effect that um, we would join the pre-membership program. And then they would essentially send us uh, some membership documentation and then send us our annual premium for twenty-twenty-four, which then city council would then approve. And that would be sometime in October.
I'd like to move that we join uh, or that we allow staff to join the pre-membership program for the WCIA.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, I just have one request. If you could, when you bring it back, give them the dollar amount. Could you just put it under general items, eleven? Absolutely, yes. Certainly. Alright, appreciate it. Thank you. Alright, thank you, Kyle. Okay, at this time, I'll make a motion to approve uh, general business consent agenda items ten A, B, C, and E, consisting of ten A, approving the August first twenty-three meeting minutes, uh, ten B, approving the August fifteenth twenty-three vouchers, ten C, uh, proving the increase, increasing the amount of the agreement with Colvickel for utility line burial to twelve thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-two cents to cover the cost of the sales tax. And general business item ten E, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign the legit creative LLC artist agreement in the amount of nine thousand dollars plus a three thousand dollar contingency. Second. Any discussion? Any clarifying questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll move right on to now what would be general business eleven. I guess I'll just call it D. Is that okay, Elsie? Okay. Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the windows at the PD Library Building by Specialty Windows in an amount not to exceed uh, two hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred twelve and fifty pennies.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kurt's. Questions? Discussion? Yeah, I'm getting there.
I, I had one question.
Go ahead.
Um, it, it mentioned that uh, the windows are leaking. Has, has that caused any damage to either side of the building?
No, it hasn't. They're actually weeping. I should have said weeping. I didn't wanna say weeping, but they're weeping and not actually physically leaking.
Okay. Okay, I'll ask my question now since I've moved it on the agenda. Uh, my question is uh, in the items that are not included, uh, I get the tax uh, permits. Um, but I guess I'm questioning uh, what's not included is the special working hours, uh, keying and final cleaning. And the reason why I'm asking on that, Jen, is um, you know, we have a, a working library, we have a lurking, working
you know, we have a working library, we have a lurking working operating police department. Um it seems logical, there there might be some special working hours to work around the service we're trying to provide there. So can you talk to that a little bit? And then final cleaning, you know, um they're gonna put a window in, I would think they'd clean it.
Yeah, no, I I I can't respond to that. I'll have to follow up with them. Um uh I what I did do is is add a contingency to accommodate uh some of those exclusions in anticipation of what those might be. I did send a a message to them asking uh what percentage they thought those exclusions might be on top of the quoted price. I have not heard back from them on that. Uh but I can follow up with the with those specific items.
And and maybe it won't be, it maybe it won't be an issue for the library or the police department if they just coordinate. I don't know, I'm just posing the question.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I had. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Uh we'll move on to general business eleven F. Is that right? Yeah. Uh make a motion to authorize an increase in staff managed contingency for the new Public Works Building in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand to allow for a change order to install HVAC in the offices and the break room.
Second.
Second discussion.
Given the temps this week, I I think it would be nice for them to have A C.
Well, uh yeah, no, I uh I totally agree. Since I'm the one that moved it, I'll I'll just ask the question, I guess, um can somebody maybe help me um understand um the the quote to do an HVAC system, I I don't know how big the area is, but it are are we is the break room in the office already improved? Is it already completed and then we're gonna go backwards to kind of go forwards now or and and I guess maybe could somebody speak to uh how we just slip by us?
Um I can, I I can respond to that, um Mayor Pro Tem. So a couple things, um keep in mind that when we originally got the bid for the Public Works Building, it came in almost double what our budget was. We scaled it back um so that it was just a shell building with the engineered mezzanine. There were a lot of unknowns with the site and whenever you get into construction on the site, so we had um we had um uh a reasonable contingency to start with. Um as it turned out, we needed to provide a firewall because of the mezzanine. Um and when um which had been included in the original bid but had not been as an uh uh as part of the ad alternate, but was not included in the package that that we chose. Um so we had contingency for that. As we looked into it for about twenty thousand dollars more, we could get a a full sprinkler system for the building and given the given the investment that the community was making in this, given that it was so much safer and given that that the the nature of the shop area and the things that they were working on, um we were able to acquire that through contingency. Um we also had um as as we proceeded on with this, when we began excavating for the building, we had a lot of of a a significant amount of unsuitable materials. Again, that was all part of the contingency. As we're moving forward towards the end of the project, um again, we were looking at how to make this as functional as possible with uh the remaining contingency. And um I I don't, I I don't know how else to say this, but the project manager who's no longer with the city made it uh um made a decision to sign a change order for the offices and break rooms um uh to construct those specifically because um because the guys really needed that space and whatnot. And we had enough remaining contingency to do that, except we didn't have enough money for the H V A C system. Bottom line is that he signed the change order without consulting with uh Wayne Hammond, our our chief plans examiner or myself. Those systems, when you walled off those rooms, were required to have that additional H V A C. We couldn't issue, we we couldn't issue uh a a certificate of occupancy without that, without that added in. Um this was something that we discovered um after the employee had left. And um again, we don't really have a lot of choice but to add the H V A C. Problem is that I only have twenty thousand dollars left in contingency. And when the quote came in, and this was the original H V A C system, there is no deconstruction because of the nature of how we constructed this. But this is what um what it's going to cost to install it. Um at the time I wrote the um the agenda bill, I had not yet received um uh the uh the um change order. And I had been told that it was that um the the contractor was expecting it to come in at forty thousand plus tax. Um so and and but that was, you you know, again, I didn't know whether it would be higher or whatnot. So we had originally proposed um uh an additional thirty thousand dollars. In reality, this came in on Friday and based upon the remaining contingency of twenty thousand, the quote that we have or the change order that we have would be thirty nine thousand and change with tax. And I would request that, um again, we're at the end of the project, but I would request a five percent contingency on the um H V A C system because because it's just been the nature of the project and um it that's a very skinny contingency. But again, we'll only use it if we have to. So um basically, um we could um address the the H V A C with um with a change order or with a with an uh an additional authorization of twenty two thousand dollars.
Well, not the thirty?
So so we could reduce the thirty, that's that is correct. Again, I didn't have the uh change order um at the time I had to write this. And because we're winding down on this project and should be there is a little bit of lead time on this, but we should be wrapping this up in the next month and a half or so. I really needed to move this forward. And as I said, we can't issue the certificate of occupancy without the H V C.
But for sure, the thirty gets it, including tax.
Uh yes, actually, twenty two thousand gets it, including tax. I I put in a buffer because I wasn't sure uh what the price was gonna come in at.
Yeah. Um I'd prefer that the, as written, uh thirty thousand remain in the movement in the action to deter any delay and to prevent any additional delays on the project.
Um Lisa, I appreciate this and I'm in favor of making sure that the staff is taken care of. But just as a as a matter, of course, when this is presented to us and it says the expenditure required, yes, on the uh sheet that we're reviewing, and then it says budgeted, I'd prefer that that be honest and that we say no and then have the explanation that you just gave us. Um then we can ask the questions about it because it was not part of the budget and it is not certainly part of the contingency. Um I I I hear what you're saying, but when it it says budgeted, that's either yes or no. And um so it would help me to know that no, it's not, and then to hear your explanation.
I I will say that my response was related to the fact that um while it wasn't budgeted budgeted for the Public Works Building, we've had other cost savings on other capital projects.
And I still have the same issue. Please just tell us whether or not it's in the budget and then explain it.
So this, I would classify this as one of those ongoing improvement discussions that we've been talking about, particularly with respect to our reports on capital projects. So we would, uh I would propose we would incorporate that suggestion among those improvements. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the original motion? Hearing no amendments, then we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for the explanation.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. All right, um general business item eleven G. Uh make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between City of Liberty Lake and Central Valley School District for the School Resource Officer.
Second.
Any discussion? Call me again? All right. Sorry, Chief. Uh and I'm sure I brought this up last year and I'm sorry, Chief, I don't remember your response, but um I I guess as as I look this over in the summary statement, um it's about forty eight percent of the officer's salary, which I've always, since I've been in the council, I've always had a little bit of heartburn with that because I just, I've always felt like it's a a form of a double taxation almost. I mean, we all pay tax taxes to the schools and we pay taxes to support our police department. So um I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit, but my bigger question is in actually is you know, comparison that I uh wanted to ask about in terms of the contract with C V under obligations where it talks about the duty status. And it basically says, hey, the officer uh uh is subject to the calls of the police department, uh not Central, but the any in the priority is the police department, not the Central Valley School District. And then when I compared that to uh Article thirty of the Police Guild Contract um section, Article thirty, Section B, it talks about the School Resource Officer. And it just calls out uh specific, uh the officer is expected to work five, eight and a half hour shifts and many evening events, home football games, so on, so on. So can you help me understand how the C D contract? It it s- I feel like it says one thing, but the Guild Contract kind of says something different.
Uh Mayor Pro Tem, I apologize to you ahead of time. I can't comment on the Guild Contract because I'm not part of the Guild. And I wasn't part of the negotiation, so I can't, you know, that's better, um that's a better question for uh Mark Oldhouse, the Guild President. I can definitely advise him of your question. And he can uh attend a a future City Council meeting to potentially a- answer that question for you. Um the the your initial question, um I I don't, I I I don't know how to answer that. I I can tell you right now that um there was a slight increase in the amount that uh Yep. And so um I think it was around three percent or a little over three percent or something like that. Um there was a little bit of a dilemma this year because the Spokane County Sheriff's Office, and I'm not, this is not throwing them under the bus or saying anything negative about our sheriff's office, but they asked for a significant increase in the contribution of the school district, significant. Um to the point where there has to be some major discussions by the school board on what they're gonna do. Um and so I I I don't know exactly what that plan is or if they've come to a conclusion or or a decision there, uh but there was a a significant increase. So we were in a little bit of a do we want to be like the sheriff's office and and ask for more? And there was, there was really no need for us to ask for more. Um along those lines, I think of what you're saying now is is that, you know, the taxpayers are paying already for um a service. Um but with that said, you know, there is that stipulation that the duty of that school resource officer is to the overall public of uh uh within our city limits. Um and so there are times where he or she, depending on who it is, may have to be pulled from the school. Um there are times where they may have to, depending on our staffing level, uh may have to work patrol for a week or two. So there's all those contingencies as well. Um but their ultimate ultimate um responsibility is to the citizens of Liberty Lake. And even though they're assigned to to the school district, um there are some other things that they have to do uh as well. Um the training and all those other things. So they're they're not just a resource of the school, they're still a resource of the community. They're just housed in that school um for, you know, nine months out of the year, um almost solely the whole, that whole time, so.
And and I'd like to add that the the C B A, the Collective Bargaining Agreement, does have a provision where the it gives the chief the authorization to reassign that school resource officer. And so the hours and days that are outlined in the particular assignment uh clause, which is thirty B, um kind of outlined what the expectation is of the officer uh with respect to the school, but that doesn't negate the chief's um ability to recall that officer and reassign him or her.
And and lastly, uh Mayor Pro Tem, the other side of that is when that body goes into a school, we have to replace that body. And so um you know, there's there's twenty one commissioned officers now. Uh if we didn't have a, including myself, if we did not have an S R O, we may only have to have twenty. So we have to replace that body. So there's some other uh variables in there as well um in regards to why there's a a slight cost to the school.
Wh- what's the likelihood that you would pull him back out of the school for, as it refers to emergencies, such and such?
Um well, right now, they are expected to respond to priority calls. So if we have a priority call, they are, they're expected to leave the school. Um we're seeing an increase in priority calls and they do leave the school periodically to assist with um uh you know, either investigations or or backing other officers on priority calls. Um you know, the the larger we get and the more officers especially that we hire that are laterals that may be a little older than a new hire, um we all come with defects. Uh we're old, um and and when officers uh do this for a while, your back goes out, your knees go out, you have gastrointestinal issues. And so we're seeing more and more officers with uh, you know, well, I have to have surgery on my shoulder or I have to have surgery on my knees or or back surgery. Um on top of that, we're having a bunch of young officers right now that are having their first children. So um you know, between medical uh and injuries and any, you know, un foreseen, unfortunate, hopefully you don't see it like an officer of false shooting, it could happen. Um you know, the world has changed. And it it it's not out of the uh possibility that we can have two or three or four officers or more involved in a shooting. And they're out for at least three weeks. At least at minimum, three weeks, I should say. Um in that case, so you know, there's all these, um and I don't like to play what is, um but there are, there is the possibility, um whether slight or, you know, significant that we may have to remove uh uh the S R O from the schools for uh e- either uh a small amount of time or a significant amount of time.
And there's no issues doing that, obviously?
No, no, yeah.
I I I guess it's not that I don't support it, I fully support it. I just would like to see a little more of a uh I don't know what the term is, a little more fair breakup of the compensation for the service based on a percentage of who the who the officer works for. So that's the only reason I bring it up. And and I don't know, Mark, if if there is any issue with the the Guild Contract and the C D Contract as far as time, but it sounds to me like the chief has got the authority to pull back whenever he needs.
He does.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all my questions.
And Mayor Mayor Pro Tem, uh just uh another thing is, uh just so that you're aware, there are quite a few things that that S R O has to do that's also outside of a normal officer's responsibility that's required by state law for S R Os and by the school district. So you know, you're kind of, you work, I was a school resource deputy and and I remember it, it's a lot of work. I mean, you're dealing with your policies, you're dealing with the school's policies, you're dealing with the state, state's policies when it comes to school. You're dealing with national policies when it comes to S R Os. And so there's a lot that goes into that, that's other than uh that's uh beyond. I'm a patrol officer and I'm in the school. You're you're, there's, you're in two different worlds. And so I think a little bit of that compensation, really, uh it's an adjustment uh for that. Um the fact that you're living in two different worlds and it is, it's a difficult world. Um because you're a counselor and a principal sometimes and and all those things, so.
Oh yeah, yeah, tough job. So, all right. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you, Chief, for the explanation. Um all right, uh so I think we're done with general business. Uh any final council comments? Hearing none, we'll move right along. No public hearings, resolutions, ordinances, or emergency ordinances. Introduction of upcoming agenda, agenda items. Mike or Mark, will you take the lead on that or I'm not?
So these are uh, some of these have been circulating in in two of So these are, uh, some of these have been circulating and and two of these will be ticked off the list as we had those conversations tonight. And so. You'll see some of the upcoming conversations and as we look out or down to the bottom of the list. Is there any, um, desire to move any of the T B Ds into actual slots? I think that's the question. Uh, that we want to, uh, talk about tonight.
I just have one question and I've looked for some feedback from the chief. Uh, as we come up into, as we come into budget season here again in another couple of months. Um, uh, can we have a discussion about additional Flock? Uh, cameras for safety, H O A type discussions. Uh, so we can budget accordingly, if that's what the council chooses.
Sure, and we've got that on there. And so, Chief, from a timing perspective, what do you think?
Uh, we can do it whenever. There, that is part of my my budget as far as the city. Um, right now, we are, um, in preliminary, um, talks with the Central Valley School District. We had a meeting today between myself, uh, our S R O and Flock. Um, to speak with the school district about potentially, uh, getting some cameras or, um, using their existing cameras. Um, as flock cameras. Um, that's another thing as the city we can do, just putting that on your mind. All of our new cameras are existing cameras on our buildings. We can use as flock cameras. There's a way to do that. We don't have to buy any more actual physical cameras. Um, so there's a lot, a lot of possibilities for us and the HOAs, if the HOAs have any. Security cameras anywhere, uh, residents entrances, those types of things. So there's a lot of options. So we can, we can definitely contact Flock and see if we can get a rep. Would probably be the best, um, way to do that, to see if we can get a rep so that we, uh, the city council can get a full understanding of. Exactly what that entails. There was a lot of questions today that I had about access. What information if an H O A, uh, does purchase cameras or uses their system in any, in any kind of way, what information, um. Uh, does, uh, whoever has been authorized to access that information, what information do they get versus what the, what the police department? Or a law enforcement officer get? And I got some good, good information today, so I think that'd be really beneficial for. For you all to hear because it's not the same information. Um, and so, um, I can contact Flock, I'll contact McElraven to see if we can get a, a presentation potentially. From Flock or a Flock rep and they can answer any questions that you have about.
So, uh, isn't round one of our budget like October?
Yes.
Yeah, sometime in September.
Yeah, we can shoot for.
When you got a little time to look more into it.
I'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it's gonna have, they're gonna have to be on the fifth, based on our schedule, so.
So as as far as a date, just what, pick a date just before our budget is all I'm asking.
Okay, yeah, yes, sir.
If that's all right with the rest of the council.
It it's gonna have to be the fifth.
It'll have to be the fifth.
Yeah, because we've got other things downstream unless you want to shuffle some of those around, but.
How long is the discussion?
I I think we can do a thirty minute. Uh, I think that will be, I mean, we're familiar with this. I think everyone here is familiar. If not, with the, if you're not. Uh, we can make it a little longer, but, um, I don't think it would be a significant discussion. I think it would be. Pretty short, so twenty minutes to thirty minutes, probably max to answer any questions.
That at seven P M.
All right, thank you.
One, I think.
One question I would have, is it, are there any way that we can invite the homeowners association boards? To come and listen to Flock? It's not only just your homeowners association. We've got others within the city too.
Yes, ma'am. So we've had, actually, we've had at least one. That I've sat in. They were curious. Um, and that was the Villas over here. Um, and so I know our, uh, School Resource Officers are acting, um. Uh, Neighborhood Resource Officer right now, we're trying that out, um. So he goes back to the schools, um, he's had, uh, a conversation with a couple of HOAs. So let me check with, uh, Officer Howard. To see what conversations he's had and make sure he hasn't had any, they haven't had any additional meetings with Flock because he has those contacts. But I think that's a great idea to have everyone here, um, to hear it at the same time.
Great, anything? Yes.
Um, I mean, I missed a couple of meetings in, um, July, but, uh, continuing discussion about the baseball field.
Yes, so we had some follow up on that and we can get you a a kind of a white paper or or a. A briefing, but we can also come back and address that again. Um, and and we'll do some of that, I think, as we have the, uh, strategic planning discussion. Uh, because that was, if you look at that data, those kinds of things were high up on those lists, so, yeah.
And I have one more question regarding North, Northside River.
Yes, that was the, if you'll recall, there was a letter that came out from a gentleman that owns property and represents other property owners up on the north side. And so he's.
Net factory. Yeah.
Right, and so the the discussion is how to proceed considering some of those suggestions. Um, and from a timing perspective, that one. We can have that conversation anytime. There's no urgency because we have to wait for some of the things that are going to come out that. Uh, preempt, not preempt, but, um, are are dependencies of the, uh, comprehensive plan update. So. Those are in the future.
Twenty twenty four.
So ours, we're going into, uh, I believe ours has to be adopted sometime in twenty twenty six. We are going into planning in twenty twenty four, absolutely. And so. This conversation will be. Uh, appropriate to have at some point in there. We can certainly start discussing it before that, but in terms of actual. Uh, putting actual planning together, that will come in the future.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I had one more. Is there, um, an update that we can get on the restaurant at Trailhead at some point?
Absolutely. And so we are, uh, scheduled to have a follow up conversation with our, um, contracted vendor. And so once we have that. The intention is to come back with that update and and brief counsel on the results. So that'll be forthcoming. Couple of weeks, next meeting.
Great. Anything else? Mark, good?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. We'll move right along. Any final citizen comments? Anybody on, somebody on Zoom? Anybody in the chambers? Yep, couple, okay. We'll go with Zoom first. Sorry, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, members of the council, this is, uh, Brian Asmus. And I just, uh, on behalf of Central Valley School District, uh, want to thank you, uh, for approving the interlocal agreement, uh, with the School Resource, uh, Officer. And just thankful for the, uh, continued positive partnerships that Central Valley School District has. With the City of Liberty Lake. And with the Liberty Lake Police Department. And to Chief Simmons' point, we did have initial discussions. Uh, with the sheriff's office and they did. Talk about substantial increases to the Central Valley School District contribution to their school resource deputies. Um, but we have, uh, worked through that, um, and are not seeing those increases for this coming school year. So that's all I have. Thank you very much, uh, and appreciate the partnership. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, Linda?
Hi, it's Linda Ball. And I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but something came up and I just thought I should talk about this. With this hot weather and wind. It has not lost on me. It has not been lost on me this week. This city is the exact, almost the exact same population as Lahaina. And we have watched in horror, at least I have watched in horror this week, as that historic little town has disappeared. So I, I can't remember who brought it up. Was it you, Tom, about the grasses? Excuse me, on the sides of Apple Way and Mission and what was the other one, Country Vista? We we've got to keep that down and be prepared for. It could happen to us. And and you know, you've all seen it this week and it's horrifying. So let's just be sure. We have a preparedness. Emergency preparedness for if that were to happen to us. And, you know, God help us if some idiot flicks a cigarette out into the grass, but it could happen. So, um, anyway, that's it. I just don't want our lovely town to end up like Lahaina. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm gonna talk, I might, I'm gonna talk pretty quickly about S R Os. Um. S R Os serve an important function in each and every school. Um, jurisdictionally, they are given to the schools by the overriding jurisdiction. Schools are not independent. They are not in a jurisdiction. So the police department or the city, wherever the jurisdiction is, provides the police officer for, uh, the school. S R Os have an extremely difficult job. Um, not only there are they there in case there is an actual shooter in the school, but they know networks of kids, kids disappear. They're able to find them quicker because they know where to look. And we are well below what is recommended for a city our size and the schools that we have in our jurisdiction. Normally, a school would have one resource officer for about a thousand kids. We have one resource officer for four schools. And so to question whether we know our contribution is to disservice our kids. We have little kids who don't vote. They can't vote for their safety. And it's really important that we look at and ask, how can we expand that program? Because we have several schools that never see an S R O. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the chambers? Anybody else on Zoom one last time? All right, uh. I guess that's it. Yeah, any final comments from the council? Motion adjourned? Adjourned. Thank you very much.
We're gonna form up here for like two minutes.